Okay, very good. All right, so it is now Monday, April 10th, and this is the meeting of the Plimpton Board of Selectmen. We had a brief executive session at 5:45, and now we're going to work on our open session agenda. And this meeting is being cable cast, is that the word?
Yeah, I think that's okay.
By Area 58, and the video is not to be considered the official document or minutes for the meeting. So first item on our agenda is power aggregation, and that is a vote to authorize Mark Russo as a signatory on favorable pricing offer. So, Mark, you've been representing us in this process, and are you getting close?
Yeah, Colonial Power thinks that rates are pretty favorable, is putting out requests for proposals, want us to be prepared if something favorable comes in. Ideally, I'd bring it before the selectmen in a meeting, but there is a chance that there wouldn't be time from the time the proposal was put forward to us agreeing on it. They've been incredible with us so far in giving us really good advice, really deeply considered advice, so I'm very comfortable in what they've reported to us. It's always a crapshoot, it's like predicting the weather in the future, like predicting the inflation rate or the gasoline price in the future, but they've done well by us, the town of Plimpton, the citizens of the town of Plimpton, saved quite a bit of money. So having the suppleness to move forward if we have to make a decision is what we're aiming at tonight.
Are you okay with that, John?
I'm okay, sure.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that we authorize Mark Russo as signatory on favorable pricing offer in the event that Colonial Power provides you with something that is a great rate that we need to jump on.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item on our agenda is ARPA funds, future projects and plans, including Town Properties Committee projects. So, John, I think this is why you're with us tonight.
You know, John, if you pulled the chair up to this table, we could use this microphone, because that way...
I'm kind of like an insect here.
Just grab that, that way they'll hear it later when they play back.
And you being so soft-spoken, have to speak up, because we don't want to miss a word here.
All right.
I don't even know where to go with that.
So we'll turn this over to the two Johns, both of you?
Yeah, so kind of how do you want to do this? Do you want to talk through some of the stuff that we have on town meeting, and then...
The town meeting, I think we just wanted to kind of breeze through the articles on the annual, and they were only going to ask if they had specific questions, so maybe we're better off doing more of an overview. So we have 312,000 in local ARPA funds sitting in our coffers. Then we have money available to us through Plymouth County. The clock is ticking on some of that money. It's ticking on all of it, but we're mindful of it. We have more than enough projects to fill it.
And so, do you have a sum roughly?
Probably around $580-ish, I think, was our allocation, but they only offer the first 25% at a time, and so we already put in 170 for the Silver Lake HVAC units.
Yep.
So we'd factor that out. As far as projects, so the local funds, there's a lot less constraints on what you can spend the money on. The county funds still have to align somewhat with the initial priorities that were outlined by the U.S. Treasury. So as far as applicable projects, obviously here, large scale, we have the eventual siting of a new well and all the expenses that come with that.
And do you think, though, that the $580, do you think that's going to be lowered as we...
I think it may be a little bit lower when all is said and done.
So if we use something like 500,000?
I would use 500, I think that's a nice, safe number.
Okay.
So we have, obviously, the eventual siting of a new well here, and I believe that the Board of Health, we're still working on some communications, but it sounds like they will be available on May 8th to come talk to this board about... There's two different projects going on. So there's the eventual siting of a new well, which is necessary no matter what, and for future projects. Then there's the well in this building currently that's in the basement, so I got some clarity on that today. So that, the well in this building, is what Board of Health right now is working on actively with DEP. They just filled out a draft of the paperwork to have it officially named a public water supply, and that is what they are in discussions with the same water operator that Denit uses to get pricing for all of us to look at for the required sampling here for this current well. So they're not looking ahead to the siting of a new well, and I think that's where we're going to need some clarity as far as roles and responsibilities, because you've got this board, Board of Health, who I think is more in this from the permit granting authority perspective, and then we have Town Properties Committee, who this board has empowered to make certain decisions and act on your behalf with respect to town properties. So I do think moving forward, and I was going to get into this more during my update, but I think it would be helpful if you took a vote, and if you don't want to do it tonight, if you want me to put it specifically on the next agenda for a simple vote, I think having something official from you empowering Town Properties Committee to interact with necessary entities and agencies in terms of the siting of a new well on the town campus, I think that would be useful. I think that's the intent from setting up that committee to begin with. I also think that they have access to the professionals that are needed. They have access to P3, they have access to somebody who knows hydrogeology, and we want to make sure that a new well, when it's eventually sited, is in a location that ties in with the town campus plan that we've already invested a lot of money in, and we need to make sure that a well isn't sited in a location that isn't conducive to developing the campus how we want to.
So I think we should vote that tonight.
Okay.
Okay, but I do want to put in a caveat that we are not trying to overstep the Board of Health's role.
Right.
We're just looking at the siting.
Any role that any department has with regard to any of this, whether it be permit granting authority, oversight authority from like the Building Department or anything, that is fully how we intend to do that and defer to any of those boards or committees in anything that we do.
It's strictly that the selectmen are empowering TPC to interact with appropriate personnel entities and to come back to this board. If you ultimately need to take certain votes to sign paperwork for the siting of a well, whatever that entails, it wouldn't strip this board of any authority, but it's just handling, like letting TPC, I would say, be the middleman, but also a step more than that.
John has used a word that I like a lot, that TPC is the agent for the select board.
Yes.
And I think that works well.
Yeah, you are.
And you can come forward with recommendations and things like that, but I think for the siting of a new well, I would feel better if you took that vote so that...
Do you want a word, something we can vote on?
What about that we vote to authorize the Town Property Committee to interact or...
To serve as the agent.
To serve as our agent and to interact with personnel and agencies in the siting of a new well?
I'll second that.
Does that sound okay? Okay. All right, so we're now saying you're our agent and that you have the authority to interact in this process.
On your behalf, yep.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so there's that, and then there's more to come on that discussion. I think by May 8th, we're going to have some pricing available from the water operator who does the work at Denit as far as sampling for the current well in this building, and it is going to cost us some...
And that will likely, that will likely carry over to the new well as well.
Right.
I mean, they're going to test, they're going to, they have to do regular testing like we've been doing at the Denit for years now.
Okay.
So unfortunately, public water supply comes with...
Expenses.
Those expenses and challenges.
Absolutely, especially into this age.
And then, just so you get an idea...
Okay, can we first finish...
We got the motion, yeah.
Okay, so we got a motion, you seconded it, John. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Aye, okay, perfect, thank you. All right, go ahead, John.
And so just from a context perspective, I mean, it's not, this project will actually be a pretty big project, because it's not just saying, here, we're going to dig the hole, and we dig a hole, and we can pump water out of it, right? We have to get the water somewhere. So most likely, a well will go, if goes where planned and DEP agrees, on the back part of the piece of property that we bought, probably closer to starting to just go down the hill. The good news is with that piece of property, it's actually, the hill is less steep when you get towards that back part compared to the cliff, pretty much that's out here behind the police station to the town barn. So you kind of get, tuck it back in there where it's appropriate and where we maintain the necessary, I think it's a 200-foot buffer...
Right.
All on our own land and thus have control of that. Once we do that, then we have to get the water up out from the well. So you're talking about a pretty long line to come from the well, back into the townhouse to where, right here, where we already have, where the well is now, because we're going to need to do water treatment. It's probably, I mean, absolutely, we'll have to do some level of water treatment system in there, depending on how much we're using, will depend on how much that will be for a cost as well. It will not be clearly as big as the Denit system, but that will have to go in there. Once we have that, then that will hook up for the townhouse. We already have existing new piping over to the new police station, but we have very old piping going over to the firehouse, existing firehouse, and no piping going over to the library, all of which will need to be on this public water supply. So that will necessitate us making a trench and getting water over there to both places as well. And then as part of the overall project, we want to make sure that we're thinking about where we're putting everything, not just the water lines, but also where we have to put sewer lines. We have the issue with the library, we have, you know, a waste issue that we've been fighting with, with the fire station, and we might be able to solve those in one fell swoop, but we need to know where all of that goes. And then if you go out in the parking lot when we leave tonight and look up, you'll see wires going every which way, and multiple things going from multiple buildings. All of that, we need to figure out what's supposed to go where and get it sorted. So we'll have to come up with a plan for all of that before we start digging, just so that we know where everything goes and that we're thoughtful about doing things and doing it once. So, and then to get, we also have to get back there, we'll have to take trees down, just even get a well truck back there to dig the test wells to know what we can get out of it. So that's, that's just that piece of it, and that's one chunk for ARPA.
And then we also have septic system work that we're obviously going to have to do. And then you look at all the other more general town projects, I mean, you know, keeping up with some of our buildings, our infrastructure. So I think as far as the ARPA funds, and John and I talked a little about this, and we do have a couple other items for the schools, some upgrades and HVAC work that's still outstanding, but I think overall, stuff that's closer to being shovel-ready, if it's stuff that falls in line with the county priorities, great if we can start tapping into some of that funding. And then even the local money, we want to start getting more of a plan together, but I guess I just wanted to check in with this board, with John here, and make sure that everybody's on the same page, because I know some people are getting a little antsy, like, oh, how are you using the ARPA money? And like, we do have plans for it, we could spend it honestly multiple times over with all the stuff we need to do.
I think from a broad perspective, you know, we're looking at, for the county money, we're looking at stuff that better fits their initial guidelines, even if they've loosened them a little bit.
Which HVAC, well, septic...
Infrastructures, which, well and septic infrastructure, we've probably spent it...
That stuff is all perfect for that. Some of the outlier stuff, whether it's, I don't know, building or security upgrades at the school, things that are a little more general, if a generator failed at a building, things like that. We have an emergency right now with the generator for this building, there's an article on to cover a portion of that, but things like that are better, probably suited for the local money that we have more say-so over how that gets.
I would like to see us go after the county money and use it as quickly as we can.
Yes.
And just get it done with.
Yep, so, I mean, for that, again, I view...
Before it disappears.
I view the well, and then we've also asked to get, we have five units on top of the Denit, that one was replaced during COVID, early part of COVID.
And then we have another one that we have the earmarked for that's getting replaced now.
Well, yeah, that's sort of, that's again, additional and separate, so that's sorted, so that's everything over the office, but there are still five units up there, and so that could be a very quick hit as far as being able to get that money sort of, you know, put aside for that. And I'm sure we, everything to do with the well and then a septic design up here, and perhaps even the septic work that we have to do for the library as well.
The leaching field issue with the library, and then we are going to have, like, Board of Health is working on it right now, they're taking the lead, as they should, on the current well in this building, getting set up with the testing and everything, but that contract will come to you most likely the May 8th meeting, and somebody from Board of Health will be here to discuss, but that's going to cost, it's a significant amount, from what I've seen so far, I've seen just a rough draft, but that, we may want to tap into some of that county ARPA money as well to get some of that off the ground, although I don't know if that would be too cumbersome from the perspective if it's like two bits and pieces. We may need to group it all together in with something else and apply for a larger amount, or maybe a year's worth of the contract.
Well, it's clear DEP is going to make us do it.
Correct.
So we might as well...
We need to start planning for it.
Get in the queue, spend the money, use the county.
And hopefully, you know, hopefully what we're doing with the well here, in the building, will be shorter term.
It's short-term and it should hold us over.
Because if anything goes wrong with that well, we have a problem.
Yes.
Because it's not really accessible right now.
But the Board of Health has taken the lead on that, and that's the right thing to do.
That gives, you know, I mean, it is a public water supply, and therefore we need to follow that. And we have a couple of, you know, things that we are doing with our local ARPA funds currently. One is the door at the top of the ramp, that we're just waiting for that to be available and the parts to be available, right?
So they got the door, and they were here to install it, and it came in from the factory about three-quarters of an inch off.
Which way?
It was too wide.
You got to make this stuff up.
So they had to bring it back to their shop, and they should be back at some point in the near future. And we can take a look at that, too, and see if we want to do county, I'm sorry, local ARPA money, or if we want to do that out of some of our other articles. We can talk about that when the invoice comes.
But that's the thinking there, and then we also are working on, if you recall, when we did the ramp, one of the things that we had also looked at was this entranceway here and what we could do to make it less hazardous with that step that someone falls down on every year. And so we have a, we have a plan with that, we're just waiting for a couple of the pieces to come together on that, and then that's something else that we would do, which would essentially remove the ramp and steps and create just a gradual ramp that would extend out a little further than it does, so that you do not need any steps or rails or any of that, and a little bit of cosmetic work to kind of tidy up that area and better lighting, and also lighting for the ramp. So that project, we would kind of put together for local ARPA as well.
So, do you want me to run down the list of ATM articles?
Because I won't be able to make the meeting on the 24th, because I have a school committee meeting, so if there's anything that you have questions with, we can...
Okay, so some of these may or may not be funded by ARPA?
I don't think we have anything...
I don't think there's any plans for ARPA.
Nothing's on there that we're putting with ARPA, these are...
I'll run through, so first I'll run through the special town meeting. Some of these, the numbers are still estimates, the ones highlighted in orange. So I'm going to just run through quickly, and if you have questions for me or for John, just say "hold," and we'll stop and let me answer.
So essentially, we're going to get the big-picture overview on these...
Big picture, and then on the 24th, you can, you'll have more time to think about it, and you can vote your recommendations.
And Finance Committee will be here the 24th as well?
They'll be here the 24th, and they're going to, they have another meeting that they're setting up just to look at all this stuff again, but they'll be voting, at least I know on one of them, with you guys on the 24th.
One of the things for the 24th I would like to see is this list with going across ARPA, county...
Oh, we have that. I just printed this for ease, we have the full spreadsheet.
Right, but I want to make sure we discuss where those pieces fall.
We can.
I don't think anything is from ARPA on that list.
Yeah, nothing's ARPA on here.
We don't need to put something on town meeting...
No, no, not for the special, no, but...
Yeah, but there's no need to put anything on a town meeting warrant for ARPA, we can just spend.
We don't need town meeting applicable for that.
But we need to look at it in the totality of it.
Yep.
So on the special, the first one is for the old townhouse roof. The project is out to bid, bids come back after the warrant goes to print. This is a very high number, I suspect it'll be more once the bids come in, and because we already appropriated 100,000 for this...
Will be less.
It's going to be less.
Placeholder.
So we'll amend this down on town meeting floor. I'm guessing somewhere between maybe 100,000, maybe 120, but you can't amend up at town, you can only amend down, so that's why we went with this number. So this will be less, less of a scary number once we get to town meeting. Building maintenance and repairs, 55,000, this is to add the funds to our established emergency building maintenance and repairs article. 6,000 for unemployment, we are self-insured for unemployment, we are dealing with some issues with fraudulent claims and stuff, and unemployment keeps tacking on fees. We don't believe we owe the money, so we're going to try to see what we can do, but in the meantime, we do need to pay the bills, so that's what that is. OPEB, the annual contribution, 10,000. The new copier, scanner, machine, and inspectional services, Building Department, it services the whole upstairs, and this is the complete cost for it in the first year of getting it up and running. Generator for the townhouse, so we had emergency situation come up with our generator. It was discovered when they also found that there were several spots where we had live wires exposed in our walls and ceilings, so we had an electrician do a lot of emergency work. The overall quote for the generator, it's a little more than this, but our plan, it's on back order and everything, so even though it's an emergency, there is a wait time. So this seems sufficient to pay for most of it, and then if we have to take the rest from town building maintenance, we've already looked at all those numbers, and that seems to make the most sense. And it will be a fully inclusive project, it priced out, like a plumber to run the gas line, all of it. It's been vetted by Tom Millius, our wiring inspector, our plumbing and gas inspector, and Bree has done a great job coordinating all of this and getting prices from different entities. So that's what that's for. Unpaid bills, there were two unpaid bills, I believe, from the fire department from a prior fiscal year, so that's that stand-in article that comes up every year. 3,200, this is to add to our management positions recruitment article, we need to be able to pay Lance Benjamino, and I think there's right now $800 in there, something like that, I'll have the figure of what's in it currently. Fire chief salary, this is on here, the number is still a placeholder, this is to cover his sick leave buyback and whatever vacation time is on the books for him. Fire EMS salaries, this is assuming that they'll have a shortfall again this year, and after talking with Finance Committee, where we don't know how their budget's going to come in for this fiscal year, we thought it best, rather than waiting until the very end of the fiscal and having to rely on our reserve fund, and also too, so that people are aware of what it costs to run the fire department and the salaries. So that number will be refined before it goes to print and prior to then. And then we have school committee transfers to the special ed line, and that, some of that is still being refined as well, some internal from existing monies in the school budget, and then we're going to have to fund some from free cash or other budget lines that will have excess in them, so Lisa's working on some of those numbers.
Yeah, when the issue was discovered in early January, there was a freeze put on the Denit budget, so only essential expenses were being used, so the hope is, is that we will be able to make up some of this difference, and of course, we have to wait till closer to, later in April, to make sure we're comfortable with what monies we would transfer over, because once we've done that, then of course, they're not available for the rest.
Right.
So we do have some spots, like, I believe we have not, we have not been able to have an in-building substitute, so that salary has not been paid out, and the school psychologist is currently on maternity leave. And so both of those are areas where we will have some extra funds that will hopefully go and at least reduce the amount that the town has to come up with for transfers to sort out that.
So the STM is proposed to be funded through line-to-line transfers if there's others that have known excess and from free cash, but numbers to be determined. Annual town meeting, we have the fiscal audits article that you see every year, and on for next time, I'll make a note, Grady from Lynch &amp; Marini sent us the new contract for the next year, but I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, so I'll put that on maybe for the next agenda and send it around.
That's one year?
Yes.
Okay.
14,000 is for the purchase of a police vehicle, it's a lease purchase program for years, and if anybody's interested, the chief provided a fantastic explanation to the Finance Committee of how they're actually making money off the really old cruisers as opposed to trading in. So if any of you are interested, let me know, and I'll have him give you a call and walk you through that, and he'll be prepared to explain it at town meeting as well in case anybody has...
Great.
...questions. Okay, so Article Number 7, School Resource Officer, I had sent you some information about this. I'd ask you to hold off on any judgment or thoughts about this until the 24th, and I asked Finance Committee to do the same. The chief is working right now on compiling data from some other places and also looking at like logistically how that would work, how it would work when school wasn't in session, all of that. So he'll be here on the 24th to provide some of that information before you vote your recommendation favorably or unfavorably, but we were approached by, it was in placeholder format for a long time, we weren't sure if it was going anywhere or not, and then seemed like kind of a perfect storm. The police wanted to move forward with it. John, I know, received some contacts from local parents being interested in it, so there is a lot of interest and seems like a lot of favorable support on this, but I think it'd be good to have all that data that the chief is working on.
Just feel like it's going to be quite a robust discussion, just that it...
I think it will.
Yeah.
I think it will. The nice part, though, about putting it on as an article is, number one, for transparency, it doesn't seem like we're trying to bury something into the police budget, and also if for some reason it doesn't shake out favorably, then we don't have to sit there and trying to do the math on town meeting floor, and we're not revoting their budget or anything like that, so...
Yeah, let's the town decide.
Yes, exactly. And council said that it's done this way very frequently in other places, he's already vetted it. 200,000, the road construction, that's the customary one. 90,000 for the Ventrak machine, we talked a little at FinCom about this. It's a little machine that does a lot of different jobs, it can snowblow the sidewalks, it can plow, it has all these attachments that can do like field maintenance, trimming...
One thing I would ask is that you asked the highway superintendent, when he was explaining it to me at least, that this would save some money because he wouldn't have to use outside vendors for certain pieces, just see if he can get a swag at that. I don't know if that means 2,000 or 20,000.
I'll find out.
Yeah.
Interim property valuation and real property data recollection, that's the assessor's office.
Did we skip five ARPA?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Lease payments, that is for the highway truck and the fiber optic network. Some of the older lease payments that you were used to seeing, the debt's finally been paid, so that article is not as large as it's been in years past. We have the personal protective equipment for the fire department, SCBA, the breathing apparatus for the fire department, the frame... The frame on Engine Two is rotting away at the fire department, so that will fully replace the frame, and that seems to be a good investment. The chief has Cheryl Davis looking at all of that and everything, and they got quotes. And so it seems like $30,000 will buy us many more years out of that engine.
Yeah.
$5,100, this is tires for Engine Two. Building and grounds consultant, engineering services, $9,000. This is to replenish that standing article that Town Properties Committee and we have on the books, so that when something goes wrong, we don't have to wait until a town meeting to hire a professional. Article 26, this is to replace the roof on the old portion of this building, the portion out front. It looks very high, I realize. $48,000 is for the actual engineering architectural services for it, and to get the bid documents prepared and everything.
Project management and follow-up. So he also does...
Yeah, they manage everything from soup to nuts. They make sure that, once the work gets done, that it's actually done in accordance with the plans and specs, and that we don't pay somebody for something that they didn't do. So it's really full construction management. Then they estimated the cost for construction somewhere between $2,000 and $2,500. And the reason why it's so high, aside from it being, having some of its own structural challenges, because it's not just the roof, it's the drainage, it's everything, but it's also because of hazardous materials abatement, because that portion of the building is so old, more than likely, they're going to find asbestos and some other things that need to be abated. So that takes that into consideration, both the testing and assuming that a contractor's going to have to remediate that.
More than likely, though, we can't spend this all in the fiscal year, right? I mean, just...
I think we can.
You think that the work will be able to be done in that kind of timing?
I mean, it's the same timeframe that we did for these two. So, you know, they'll go out to bid in the late end of summer, probably.
Right.
And, you know, hopefully, we'll get started in the fall, and they'll start working on it, yeah.
Okay.
Then we have library interior improvements and further flooring fixes. Highway alarm system, so last year, we had gone to town meeting for alarm systems at the library and highway. The library, we started there first, and there were a lot of problems with the wiring. So it ended up using basically all the money on just the library. So now we're back to get the highway department up and running with proper alarm systems. IT security updates and technology, this is to replenish our IT article. It looks like we haven't expended funds from the current one, but we're going to. There was some server upgrades and a couple different things on backorder. I will check in with Michael on that, I'm just making a note. But that's to replenish that article. Then we have $25,000, this is for the children's nonfiction book collection. They have a situation at the library, both the adult and children's nonfiction sections. They actually contain a lot of books that are very out of date and have incorrect information in them. And Mike Slawson has done a wonderful job cataloging everything and making sure what they have for inventory, and he can even go as far as to tell you like the last time particular books were checked out, if something hasn't been checked out in the last 15 years, that kind of thing. The whole project in total to replace both collections to the level that he wants to is about $150,000. So we thought taking baby steps would be more palatable for people, but we don't want to let it go too far without making those...
So he can live with a six-year program, something like that?
Correct, because he said it takes so long to get the new inventory in and to cycle everything out, that even if you fully funded him at the $150,000, he wouldn't spend any of, all of it for a while, so he was content with this.
Does he do the work himself on this?
He does a lot of it himself. He does have some part-time staff, but he's...
All right, so they don't bring in somebody to do this work?
No, it'll be him doing...
He is actually in the children's room staining the shelves.
Yeah, he's staining all the shelves.
This man is unbelievable.
He is. What an asset.
Recreation fields, this is because we have our newly reformed recreation committee. They're very active again, and they're back online. Aside from having a real budget this year, so they're back budget line-wise, they're in an interesting predicament because they need to be doing work at this time of year, or even like the March timeframe, to get all their fields and complexes, everything up and running. And it's really not conducive to the timing of town meeting. It's almost like when they get the funds, they wouldn't be able to use them until the following spring. So we're hopeful that by getting the budget line up and running, we do have an earmark in place that'll help them get stuff in order for this season that we're coming into right now. But this is almost, it's basically money in the bank for next year, so that next spring, this time next year, they can handle everything that they need to handle. And this has been fully vetted, it's gone through, we've had discussions with PACE, John and John have been involved in discussions, Town Properties Committee, Mark Riley came in and met with me. So this number has been well-vetted, and I think it'll have a lot of support.
I would encourage you to take a walk down the mall fields, just to see some of the work that they've started. It's very impressive.
Yeah, and I think, you know, after we get a couple of years in, it's the same thing, we've dealt with it all over town, right? We didn't have any money for things, we didn't have any money for things, okay, now we start to have a little bit of money. What do we need to do? Oh my God, we need to do this, we need to do this, we need to do this. They need to have this fund to be able to start catching up, but then I think they'll fall into a rhythm in understanding that these are the sort of things we have, and, you know, you'll have this article, and I sort of see it happening in a similar fashion to what we do for the consulting article for Town Properties, whereby you go back and sort of replenish up to a level so that they have those funds there. And I think as you get a year or two into this, we'll start to see a more regular pattern as to what they need and knowing what the prices are. But they've got a lot on their plate right now, just to kind of catch up with all of the fields and infrastructure, so...
I'm very supportive of this. I think we've got a great group of people that are out there.
That's wonderful, because nothing's been done for a long time.
Right.
And so that's terrific.
And we had a probably an almost an hour and a half-long meeting with them, at Town Properties, to kind of talk through all of the different things and what belongs sort of with PACE, what belongs with REC, what belongs with Town Properties.
Yeah, and that was a lot of it, is who's responsible for what, and yeah.
So I think we're heading in the right direction. That's good.
So then we have Denit classroom flooring. This will continue efforts to replace the flooring in some of the classrooms. This will handle three classrooms. Bylaw codification, this is the regular updates that E-code needs to perform. Silver Lake HVAC unit, this number actually had got cut in half from the original number, so it's for one unit at Silver Lake. And then there's the article that we usually see each year for Silver Lake, for the middle school, to partially fund a resource officer. From the town meeting articles for annual, planning to fund a little over $774,000 from capital, and then the rest, we're doing $295,000. $295,000 would be coming from the ambulance fund, but that is to supplement the budget line for fire and EMS salaries. And then I believe, right now, we're playing with the numbers on free cash, but looking at maybe $350,000 or $360,000 from free cash, and then the rest would be raised and appropriated. So you're looking at being under the levy limit, probably somewhere a little over $150,000 below the levy limit. So that's where we are with that. Lisa's still refining the numbers. You'll have much more concrete numbers to look at by the 24th. And that's a wrap on those.
Looks good. All right, so next, we've got the MBTA community zoning requirements and next steps.
So I sent, I had sent an inquiry finding out like what happens if you don't comply. I forwarded that response around late today, and then I responded with some follow-up questions. I believe that there's something that's actually due into the state by June 30th. We do have technical assistance from Old Colony, but I'm getting the sense that there might be some time constraints with the staff there. So I sent an inquiry to find out about getting an extension on that, and how much specific information they need to get us at least to meet that one threshold. And then I figured, as a community, we could figure out what we want to do. So I think we should put this on an upcoming agenda. I don't think that there's any real point in discussing this much more tonight until we have more info.
When we do discuss it, though, would you, I noticed that they had, in your email, there was the number of units they would require?
It's zoning for 53 units.
Right. So could you find out how many we have today?
No, this is brand, this has nothing to do with what we have. We have to do brand-new zoning that can incorporate 53 units or more.
Here regardless of what we have.
We have to have zoning to allow for it. It doesn't mean that they can build it.
It doesn't, but OCPC...
All right, we'll discuss it then.
They're changing the viewpoint now, and they're saying not to do it in mind, that it'll never get built.
No, but...
Question is, where are you going to put it?
Correct. Correct.
Well, it would have to be like an overlay district.
It would have to be an overlay somewhere around...
We had a hard enough time putting 14 units in up on Lake Street, and, I mean, that's just 14. And none of these, none of the units can be, they're not, you can't do over 55 for the units, they have to be unage-restricted.
Right.
Right, and we'd be more interested in age...
Right, low in time.
And that density just becomes a real challenge. I mean, there was just an article in the paper about the Halifax one, that they said to get that density, you need 200 units to be able to build the waste treatment facility with the building in order to be able to process that amount of waste without having a lot of land associated with it. So it's a...
So I'll report back when we have more, and we can put it on for another discussion.
Hopefully, we can do that next meeting, just because time is getting short.
Yes, it is ticking.
All right, and then Liz, warrants paid.
The bulk of this was utilities, there were some supplies from Amazon, and there was an invoice for WB Mason.
Great, thank you. All right, Town Administrators' Updates.
So we're in the final stages of getting our Green Communities grant application put together. We're looking at trying to obtain funding for the mini-split system at the old townhouse as well as at the library. So we've prioritized those two buildings. If there's any room for requesting additional funding, then we'd look at the overhead infrared heaters for the highway barn. But right now, old townhouse and library are the top of the list for that. I'm going to get more information also from OCPC. They are providing us with technical assistance to update the housing production plan, and I just want to make sure that that doesn't get linked in such a way to the MBTA zoning that we have an issue one way or the other. We were talking with Habitat for Humanity, interesting timing with the housing stuff. We're going to pick up the discussion with them after town meeting and see if we can identify a parcel and look at potential projects.
Great. Well, Amy Bellmore is the director now.
Yeah.
Jim retired, so good for her.
Jim's still involved on the periphery, so it's nice to see him sometimes. We'll often do Zoom calls and everything, but yeah, Amy's doing a fantastic job. She's an asset to them, so... And then just been busy with the warrants and corresponding with Town Council on everything. There are a few articles, non-monetary, that they're still working on reviewing. And then for correspondence, we do have the resignation of Leanne Cashman, which was effective today, April 10th. So we do wish her the best in all of her future endeavors, and I would suggest taking a vote just to reaffirm acceptance of that.
All right, I'll make a motion that we reaffirm our acceptance of the letter of resignation submitted by Leanne Cashman.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And that is it for correspondence.
Great, thank you, Liz. All right, so we're holding the minutes from 3:27, so we'll have to have those for our next meeting. Our next meeting is on the 24th of this month, and then the following meeting would be May 8th. So the 24th, we're going to have a pretty busy agenda with Finance Committee, and you're not going to be here, right, John? You can't be here?
Right.
Okay, but we'll be discussing the warrant and all of that.
Yes, because it goes to print the next day, so...
Okay, perfect. All right, so we've got no other business. Any raves or rants?
Oh, yes. No, I have a rave, again, for the recreation, because when you walk out there, you can actually see physically what's happening out there. Also, the council on aging, I attended their meeting, which I usually do, being old, and they have a lot going on. They have lunches going on almost every month, different things with entertainment, and there's a vibrancy right now to the town, I think, the different age groups, so...
It's exciting.
Yeah.
All right, mine would be for the implementation of the Pay As You Throw program, that I think it really went pretty smoothly. Much of it was your help and Rob's doing the informational...
Definitely Rob's.
...session so that people felt more comfortable with it, and it seems like that, for the most part, the townspeople are pleased with it, and it's working well.
My rave is for Liz. It's like a...
Is that the Queen of Years?
The Queen's wave, no.
Years' worth of work, you know, shows up in the four-page budget.
I know.
Fully recognize the incredible amount of time making that happen, and an equal rave that town meeting is in six weeks, and all the more the anticipation when that's out of the way, and we can kind of proactively work on other projects. But particularly Liz and the Finance Committee for getting the budget done. Amazing gathering all that. Well done.
Yeah, really great teamwork, that it seems like you're firing on all cylinders, and things are going smoothly.
Yeah, they've been great to work with.
Good. Great to hear.
That's good.
All right, well, that's it for us tonight, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night.